I call the Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to applaud her and welcome everybody here. Our invocation tonight, I'll ask my colleagues to stand, and then after that, after the invocation, I'll ask everybody to stand as we give the pledge allegiance to our flag, led by Councilman Moody. But the invocation tonight is by Dr. Aresha Adu Salam of the Muslim Society Interfaith Liaison. And my colleagues will stand, please.
Greetings of peace. We thank the Almighty Creator for this prayer of inclusivity in the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. As we share in this momentous occasion, I would like to extend the greetings of peace and salutations as presented in the Holy Quran in the Arabic language of Assalamu Aleikum, which means, may the peace that the Almighty Creator extends be with you always. I extend this greetings of peace from the Muslims in Portsmouth and the entire Hampton Roads to Mayor Mr. John Rowe, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor Lisa Lukasberg, to the entire City Council members and the citizenry of our great city and state, Portsmouth, Virginia. Once again, Assalamu Aleikum. I would like to mark this momentous occasion on our great city's 170-year history of incorporation. To my knowledge, I am the first Muslim, the first female Muslim, and the first African-American Muslim to officiate the City Council prayer for our beloved city of Portsmouth. Please let us take our honorable position of prayer as we pray this sacred prayer. With the name of God, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, praise be to God, the cherisher and sustainer of all the worlds, master of the day of judgment, thee do we worship and thine aid do we seek, show us the straight way, the way on whom thou hast bestowed thy grace, those whose portion is not rapt and who go not astray. God, please avail us your mercy, peace, and blessings. Oh God, expand our breast which encloses the heart, purify and cleanse the heart so that we may be obedient to your will and to your way, that we may enter into your paradise pleased with you, and that you may be pleased with us. Guide the City Council members of this great city as they lead. Guide the citizenry of this great city as they trust in their leaders and unify the citizens of this great city as we stand in unity. Almighty Creator, bless our seniors, bless our children and their parents, our teachers, and all the members of our armed forces. We pray this prayer standing in humility and in sincerity. May all the ears that hear this prayer and all the hearts that feel its warm embrace and submit to a righteous path of true truth, justice, and equality, that those hearts and minds and souls say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We now will do our roll call, and this will be electronically. To my colleagues on council, please indicate your presence here by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Our next item is the consideration of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of October 21, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting of October 22, 2019, and the minutes of a regular meeting, October 22, 2019. And we'll consider the approval and the adoption of all these minutes in one motion.
The adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, please indicate your vote by voting yes. If you're in support, voting no if you're not. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is the presentation of a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. And Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we're going to ask Mr. Robert Moore to come forward, please, along with Mr. Donahue, the Assistant Director, to speak with you and one of his other staff members will come forward also.
Before I ask the clerk to read the proclamation, small businesses make up more than 97% of our country, our Commonwealth, and our city. And so it's an understatement to say that they are the backbone of our economy. And would that I like for the clerk to read the proclamation, please?
Yes, sir. City of Portsmouth, a proclamation, whereas the government of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Business Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector of the United States, and whereas 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make in their community, and whereas Portsmouth, Virginia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, our Mayor, John L. Rowe, Jr., do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30, 2019, as Small Business Saturday in Portsmouth, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on a Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you. And you might take this as a commercial, but it's a sincere request. On that Saturday after Thanksgiving, show up at any small business in Portsmouth with your wallet or checkbook and shop small. It's my great honor to give you this proclamation, and I'd like for you to make some comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and guests and citizens here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for this proclamation. I think this is, we're doing this once a month now, it seems like, we're doing some type of proclamation when it comes to small businesses and businesses in our city. But during the time where, in between Black Friday and Cyber Monday, it's kind of easy for us to look past our local businesses and shop in the big boxes and in the online retailers. But we're here today, as the mayor stated, and as a commercial, if you will, to please support your small businesses on November 30, on that Saturday, and we'll be out there with you, patroning those businesses. So we look forward to seeing you out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Robert Moore, who's the Director of our Department of Economic Development, for all the work. They get up every day thinking about how they can improve and expand the city's tax base and create jobs and well-paying jobs. So my thanks, my gratitude to you and your team.
Mayor, if I may make a correction, I introduced Mr. Donahue, who is on vacation, but joining Mr. Moore is Armon Smith.
Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner, excuse me, that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. This brings us to our next item, is item 19-400, which is a public hearing. Give me a second to tell you the background for this public hearing. This is a public hearing on the development of a policy for the use of the council chambers, which is this room. Council is in the process of drafting a policy. Once that policy is drafted, and council will come into this chamber and adopt that policy. But we thought it would be important to solicit comments from our citizens about the use of the council chambers. And so with that, that's the purpose of this public hearing. When I open the public hearing, if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, and you'll be given five minutes to share with City Council your thoughts on the use of the council chambers. You do not have had to sign up in advance. This is a public hearing. So if you desire to speak, please come forward. Do we have any registered speakers for the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
And who is that?
Mr. Mark Godalgie Yotrowski.
Okay, when I open the public hearing, our first speaker will be Mark Godalgie Yotrowski, and this public hearing is now open. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. I'm sorry that I'm the first speaker because that tells me that the word about this public hearing did not get disseminated very far and wide. I understand that you may have received a comment or two, and I think that those that you have received would have been the result of my outreach to the community. So I only learned of the content of this hearing this morning as I was going through the agenda items and going behind the agenda itself to the substantive explanations of what's on the summary agenda as published. I have watched with dismay and in silence as you have worked through some of the proposals from the city attorney regarding a new policy. I say dismay because what you have had before you on the screen and in discussion is essentially a repudiation of a lengthy tradition in this city of having this chamber available for a variety of civic meetings. So the policy that is taking shape would effectively deny the use of this chamber to citizens for civic purposes. That, to me, is incompatible with a democratic form of government. It is the citizens of this city, the taxpayers, who paid to have this building constructed, who pay for the maintenance on this building, who pay the utilities for this building. And although this is your chamber for the conduct of public business, it is still the people's chamber. Certainly, there are uses that I would consider inappropriate in this chamber. If an organization wanted to use it for a private function, that would not be compatible with what I consider an appropriate use. But for citizens to use it, as has recently occurred, and has occurred over the course of the 23 years that I've been a citizen of Portsmouth, for candidate forums of one sort or another where the public was invited to attend and all candidates who were eligible to seek a particular office were invited to participate, that, to me, is one of the higher and better uses of such a civic space. Now, the attorney has provided a whole web of legalisms behind which you can take shelter if you decide to cast aside our traditions. And I would say simply that just because something is legal, it doesn't make it right. I believe Portsmouth has demonstrated leadership in terms of the way it has made this chamber available for civic purposes, and I will not countenance the elimination of that option. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? If you would like to speak at this public hearing, please come forward and come to the lectern. You'll have five minutes. Any additional speakers? Anybody else? Public hearing is closed. We go to our next item of business, which is unfinished business, and we have two items, and they come under item 19-374, as part of our consent agenda. I might ask the clerk to read both items, and with the, we'll consider one motion to put both before us.
Excuse me. Okay. Item A, zoning amendment ordinance Z1904, and item B, resolution granting a use permit, U.P. 1914, to Luna Development Services, LLC, to construct and operate a medical treatment facility at 1500 Block of High Street South.
Will you read? I got distracted with the...
I read the ordinance and resolution, Mayor.
On both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the distraction. So that we can put this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Okay, we're now ready for discussion, and we do have one speaker, and that's Donna Tsai, who has signed up to speak on this matter. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Tsai, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Ordinance 19-374, rezoning and use permit, is an ordinance to rezone two acres of land with six parcels on High Street, five parcels on King Street, and one parcel on Peninsula Avenue, from Form-Based Code to Neighborhood Mixed Use. And the reason the developer wants to have these 12 parcels of land for the Community Health Center instead of finding another site is because the 12 parcels of land are already recorded as tax-exempt commercial in the city assessor's office. This knowledge will save the developers the trouble of filing for a real estate tax exemption. At the Planning Commission meeting on September 3, the six commissioners present voted to pass the request for the rezoning and the use permit in spite of the opposition of the public attending the meeting and the opposition letter sent. There was more people opposed to this request than the commissioners who voted for it. The public wanted the planning commissioners to deny the application of the developer for these 12 parcels of land. Instead, their suggestion was to find another option to build a community center, and their suggestion was denied, and the voice of the people were overruled. Then at the Westbury Civic League meeting held on September 17, the developer gave a presentation to the members. Some members stated to the developer, to find another more suitable place, the developer ignored the citizens' concern. And then on Tuesday, October 22, at the City Council public hearing, the first reading was approved, seven to zero. Now, let's look at representation of the people in District One. The 12 parcels are located in Voting Precinct Nine. The representative of District One was responsible to vote for the people she represents. She didn't vote on behalf of the people she represented in Voting Precinct Nine. This is one of many failures of our elected to represent the people. These 12 parcels are zoned D2 Form-Based Code. On High Street corridor, two facilities have followed the D2 Form-Based Code, the Social Service Building and the Behavioral Health Building. These two buildings have complied with the requirements of being set back from High Street as required by the Form-Based Code. The reason for the regulation is High Street is considered a corridor for traffic consideration. This is why the developer wants to change the zoning to Neighborhood Mixed Use, so he doesn't have to follow the regulations of the D2 Form-Based Code that requires the Community Health Center to be set back off of High Street corridor. The commissioners failed to do any research on the developer's requests. The transportation planning manager nor the city engineer were asked to give their input on this project. The liaisons didn't look at the budget for the year 2020 to see that $68,000 was deleted from the Community Health Center project to balance the budget. The elected and appointed are not only planning to disregard the D2 Form-Based Regulation, they are unknowingly destroying the character of our city and also denied the people the right to self-govern. Now, the Rite Aid drugstore located 1141 London Boulevard is now closed. It is on 1.4 acres of land. It is zoned commercial D2 Form-Based Code. The building can be repurposed for a community health center. The land and building is assessed at over $1 million, and I am sure that EDA can come up with a plan about the money and help the Rite Aid corporation get their just due. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to approve the consent agenda and these two items? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-401, the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $2 million from the Risk Management Fund balance to the FY 2020 Risk Management Fund budget, and transferring the said $2 million from the FY 2020 Risk Management Fund budget to the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund budget.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration as our motion to adopt the ordinance. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, and we're ready for discussion, and we do have two registered speakers, and the first is Mark Godalgie Yotrowski. And, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow interested parties. I reluctantly support this measure, but I am not pleased to do so. I imagine that some of you on the dais were as astonished as I to hear in a work session, in a rather matter-of-fact presentation, that, oh, by the way, there are two more million dollars worth of repairs that are necessary or desirable for the pavilion, on top of the $3 million previously committed to repair the mast that supports the curtain above the pavilion. I opposed the construction of the pavilion back in the day when there was the opportunity to do so, not because I think it's a bad idea as an enterprise, but because I think it's a bad investment for a public body. I feel that that sort of venue should be paid for by a private party who sees an opportunity to make a profit from providing entertainment, and that the city's role would be to partner by providing infrastructure, not the infrastructure for the pavilion itself, but, you know, support services, water, sewer, et cetera. But that was brushed by, and as the years have gone by, the public investment in this venture has risen to, I'm sure by now, what with lawsuits and compensatory awards to the former promoter, it's probably the nearing $25 million of public investment. And our return on that investment has been minuscule. It's not even paid for yet. So to see us have to pony up another $2 million to make repairs that are essentially maintenance issues, the kinds of things that should be checked year over year to ensure that the facility functions as intended, there seems to be a serious lapse here. And I'd be interested to know, after I've finished my rant, if any of you actually knew about it before that work session two weeks ago. I don't believe that this is the kind of thing that should be just dropped off as though it didn't matter, as though $2 million was not significant. The other thing I want to ask for, this $2 million that you are appropriating is coming out of the Risk Management Fund. I would like somebody to tell me and other members of the public, just what is the balance in the Risk Management Fund? It appears to be something that's treated like a bottomless cookie jar. If you don't know where else the money is to come from, then pull it out of the Risk Management Fund. But I don't see it being replenished on a regular basis either. I think it would be informative for all of us to know how this cash flow operates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Tsai. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Tsai, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-401 is an ordinance to transfer $2 million from the Risk Management Fund category of the budget for the year 2019-20 to category of the Capital Improvement Fund for the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project. In the budget book for the 2020, it reads that, I'm going to just say, $2 million has been appropriated for the year 2019. For the year 2020 adopted budget, there was no money allotted. Why was no money allowed at the time the budget was going to be adopted? In the budget for the year 2019, Capital Improvement Control Union Bank and Trust Pavilion had over $528,000 appropriated, with $1,000 being appropriated for the year 2020. So what is the Control Union Bank and Trust Pavilion? Now, the city wants to use money in the Risk Management
Now the city wants to use money in the Risk Management Fund of the city? The Risk Management Fund balance is over $6 million for 2020. In the Risk Management Fund for the school, there's a category called operating transfers in for the schools of over $5 million. So why is the school's risk management listed in the city's budget book? How much total money is needed to complete project for the Pavilion Mast Canopy Replacement Project? Why is this $2 million coming out of the Risk Management Fund? How come the people aren't kept abreast of how our money is being shifted around? In the budget book, it reads, "The city manager shall make a monthly report to the city council of all transfers greater than $50,000." There has not been any written report of the need for $2 million of the taxpayers' money. The people did not get an updated report from the liaison of the hospitality hotel industry and the pavilion. We, the people, have to print out our own budget book, and therefore, we aren't able to keep up with our money to hold those accountable who are responsible to oversee the people's assets. The elected already has already decided to vote on this backroom deal without giving the people a correct financial report.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion by council on this matter, which is a motion to adopt? Ready for the question? Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask staff for an update on the insurance situation, on the damages that were incurred.
Dr. Patton. Our city attorney.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the travelers' insurance has done an inspection of the property and the equipment involved. On this Friday, we will have a discussion with regard to the property, both with the operator as well as the council with regard to this matter, and provide updates once those meetings have occurred. Our expectation is that we will have a convening of parties next week.
Will our claim equal or exceed the $2 million?
The claim is still pending. I'm not certain that it will equal $2 million, but we will certainly, we are pursuing the claim for the entire amount involved. As you all are aware, claims process is not what I would call a straight arrow process. It can be challenging at times to get folks to respond in the timeframe you require, but that does not mean there are not other options in terms of the city. So no, we have not stopped the claims process in terms of getting full recovery or pursuing full recovery for the losses in this matter.
Thank you.
But you're seeking that? But you're seeking that?
Certainly.
Good. Any further discussion on the matter? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion which is to adopt, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-402, the consideration of another ordinance, its adoption. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting state homeland security grant funds in the amount of $41,500 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Sir, second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 19-403, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And will you read the caption of that ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds from the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Grants Fund budget in the total amount of $9,567,320 to the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund budget.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We need a second.
Second.
All right, we're ready for discussion, and we do have a speaker, and that speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-403 is an ordinance to reappropriate over $9 million for the 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Grants Fund to the year 2020 Portsmouth Public School Grants Fund. How come there was so much money left over? How come the Portsmouth Public Schools Grants Fund account is in the city's budget book? What was this grant money supposed to be used for? The people needed to have a summary revenue and expense report to see why there was this much money left over for the year 2019 to be transferred for the year 2020. We have liaisons to the Portsmouth Public School system? How come they are telling us what is going, how come they're not telling us what is going on in the budget before we have to come here to an, for the ordinance to tell the people this has occurred? How come we, the people who want to know, can't know by a written report that it describes everything instead of just words to each other?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this matter? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to 19-404, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
That's the consideration of another ordinance. And will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting grant funding in the net amount of $128,995 and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption. Second.
Any discussion on the matter? We do have one speaker that would like to discuss it, and that's Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. And as you can tell, I ran a little office, and I had to take care of the money in the office. So I got a little experience about money. So I'm interested in money, especially, especially when I'm in public. 19-404 is an ordinance for the city to accept over $128,000 grant money and appropriate money for the year 2020 Grant Fund budget for the Portsmouth Public School. Does this mean that the city is holding on to the school's money for a later time when the city will give the school this money? What organization gave this grant money to the city? We, the people, need to know the details. Where are the liaisons that are supposed to keep the people informed on the business affairs of the school system? How come all this money is floating around without any accountability? We, the people, need an auditor. In this way, we can get answers before there is a public hearing where the decisions are already made, before we, the people, come up and speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion, which is a motion to adopt the ordinance? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 19-405, which is the consideration, adoption of another ordinance. And will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $24,148 of telephone commission revenue in the FY 2020 General Fund operating budget for use by the sheriff's office.
So that we can get this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for the discussion, and we do have one speaker, and that's Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-405 is an ordinance to appropriate over $24,000 of telephone commission revenue in the, for the year 2020 city's operating budget for use by the sheriff's office. Who is providing this money to the city? Is this money coming from the jail inmate's telephone calls to get their needs met? Why is this money staying in the city's operating budget instead of going into the sheriff's budget? If this money is coming out of the inmates in the jail use of the telephone, this is double punishment for those incarcerated. Will this money be included in the sheriff's budget for next year, for the year 2021? The liaison for the jail needed to have given a report on this money before this ordinance was written. If there was an opportunity for the constitutional officers to have a seat at the work session table, they would give us a report on revenues and expenses on a monthly basis.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 19-406, which is the consideration of adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting federal asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $85,666.45, of which $69,020.26 is from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, and $16,646.19 is from the Division of Customs and Border Patrol of the Homeland Security Department and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Sheriff's Asset Forfeiture Fund for use by the sheriff's office.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're now ready for our discussion, and we do have one citizen that would like to discuss this matter, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-406 is an ordinance to accept money from the federal government's asset forfeiture fund, forfeiture fund for over $85,000. Over $69,000 is from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, and over $16,000 is from the Division of Customs and Border Patrol for the Homeland Security Department. This $85,000 is going to, for the year 2020 Sheriff's Asset Forfeiture Fund to be used by the sheriff's office. Where is the copy of the sheriff's budget? I didn't find it in the budget book for the year 2020. I need to see the organizational structure of the sheriff's office. There was a reentry council steering committee meeting on November the 7th at the Social Service Building. The sheriff was not there or his designate. The liaison to the courts and jail was not present. No one from the Community Criminal Justice Board was present. How are the people going to know what is going on within our offices and departments if there's no structure for a communication line to keep we, the people, informed? There's a liaison who complains about the cost of empty beds at the Hampton Roads Regional Jail? Look at the money in this ordinance. There's enough money to pay for these empty beds. Also, where is the effort to redraft another agreement with all the cities of the number of beds needed? We need to have the five constitutional officers given an opportunity to give we, the people, a report monthly. The city council can move off their seats once a month and sit on the sidelines like we, the people, have to do. The city can have three work sessions a month instead of four. The constitutional officers are under the citizens. The people are to hold the constitutional officers accountable. How can we do it when there's no structure and no information given, therefore, no communication?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion, which is to adopt the ordinance? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 19-407, and this is the consideration of another ordinance, its adoption. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting opioid response prevention award in the amount of $22,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use in assisting individuals who have been directly or indirectly impacted by the opioid crisis.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's on the floor that's been seconded. We're ready for discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Item 19-408 is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting general funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia in the amount of $175,000 and appropriating said sum to the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund budget for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to expand access to medication-assistant treatment for opioid use disorder.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. We're ready for discussion. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We're at item 19-409, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption.
Yes, sir. An ordinance, one, establishing a new project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund entitled Safe Haven Building Renovation; two, appropriating the sum of $2 million from the Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund balance to the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund budget; and three, transferring the said $2 million to the Safe Haven Building Renovation Project.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for the discussion, and we do have one speaker, and that is Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-409 is an ordinance to create a new project in the, for the year 2020 Capital Improvement Fund called, now remember this name, Safe Haven Building Renovation. The ordinance is to transfer $2 million from the Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to the Safe Haven Building Renovation Fund. In the budget book, under Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund, it reads, under Crisis, Emergency Services, and Jail Programs. The emergency services unit ensures the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Services can provide 24 hours a day, seven day a week coverage for individuals experiencing a psychiatric emergency. The crisis intervention team, Assessment Center, Safe Harbor, on the campus of Maryview Medical Center affords law enforcement a safe place to transfer On the campus of Maryview Medical Center affords law enforcement a safe place to transfer custody of individuals apprehended for nonviolent misdemeanor offenses with psychiatric and behavioral symptoms for assessment and evaluation for civil commitment. What is the name of the capital improvement project? Is it Safe Haven or Safe Harbor? They are two different facilities, and where is the facility located? The Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund has over $14 million in the budget. So this $2 million transfer will leave the Behavioral Healthcare Services with over $12 million in their budget. So how is the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Services make up for the transfer of the $2 million? How come this project wasn't addressed before now? The people have a Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board and a liaison. How come the people haven't been kept informed of the needs of this facility before now? The Communication Department needs to give the people reports on the actions of the boards and commissions throughout the month. We need information before there is a public hearing. Here's another capital improvement project planned after the budget has been approved, and why is that? So you're going to vote on this thing when you don't have the correct name in it. So this is how we work. Vote, it doesn't matter if it's right or wrong.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion, which is to adopt? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And for the record, we got the name right, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Two different entities altogether. All right. This brings us to item nineteen dash four ten, of the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $475,000 in interest savings from the debt service fund balance to the FY 2020 Debt Service Fund, and transferring said amount to the rental of land police facilities line item of the FY 2020 General Fund Budget.
So that we can get this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to, and has been seconded, to adopt the ordinance. We're ready for a discussion, and we do have two speakers who want to participate in this discussion. The first is Mark Gudolgi Yatroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. Seems like there are only two citizens in the city of Portsmouth. I don't know if we've had a massive depopulation or what.
Sir, will you stay on point, please?
Yes, sir, of course. So, this item concerns me. I notice a surprising similarity between the amount of $475,000 being referenced in this item and the cost of proceeding with the proposal to build a new city hall and parking garage that we would have been in, in the midst of had the proponent or the offerer not withdrawn that offer. And then, the way this money is moving around, from the debt service fund balance to the FY 2020 Debt Service Fund, hmm, are they two different, are they two different line items in the budget? And then transferring that to the rental of land police facilities line item of the 2020 General Fund? I don't recall having run across that when I was reviewing the budget, but there are a lot of line items in there, so I could have missed it. I believe we need more information. The public deserves more information. Not so many years ago, we bought a building on this, this particular section of the Civic Center that was supposed to house the police building. And then a couple of years pass, and we find out that the building is essentially derelict. And so, all the leases that we terminated to house our police and firefighters to move into this building that it turns out wasn't ready for prime time, poof, probably early termination fees, definitely moving expenses, and so now we're going somewhere else. Well, some part of the police was supposed to go to that building, that, that other vacant building formerly known as the Sports Hall of Fame, but I guess everybody couldn't be shoehorned into there. So where are we really going? What is the end game here? I believe that the people need to know what's going on with us. $475,000 here, $475,000 there. Pretty soon, you're talking real money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Nineteen dash four ten is an ordinance to use $475,000 from the interest saved from the debt service fund to be transferred for the rental of land for a police facility. So where is the land that the city is planning to rent for the police department? The city bought the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame from a company that bought the building after it went into foreclosure. Why does the city have to rent land? Seven hundred to seven ten Crawford was demolished. It was owned by the city. The people didn't give permission to have these two buildings demolished. Well, let's look at some history about money. We all remember when the judicial system sued the city so they could get a new courthouse because the Civic Center's court system needed to be repaired. If the elected had have taken care of the courthouse, and the police department and the Civic Center, we wouldn't be going through all this turbulence. The Civic Center can be repaired and rehabilitated to house the police department, the fire department, and the sheriff's department administrative offices. The Civic Center is the guardian for our coast. Look at all the expense that has occurred because of lack of care for the history of our city. This money, $475,000 from the interest saved, could have been applied to the debt if the elected had foresight.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? The motion is to adopt the ordinance. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item four, nineteen dash four eleven. And will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article One of Chapter Thirty-two of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended by adding a new section thirty-two dash thirty to clarify that the offering and use of shared mobility devices for hire is prohibited except in accordance with the city's Shared Mobility Device Pilot Program.
So that we can consider this matter and get it before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're now at item nineteen dash four twelve, which is the consideration, the adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution establishing the City of Portsmouth Shared Mobility Device Pilot Program and adopting program regulations.
So that we can consider this resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and has been seconded to adopt this resolution. We're ready for the discussion, and we do have one speaker, and that is Mark Gudolgi Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. I have major concerns about the set of policies and procedures that are contemplated in this particular measure. It appears to me that the City of Portsmouth really does not want any shared mobility devices here. The fees are unattractive for the, for the providers. The regulations go beyond common sense, good sense, safety regulations, and the reporting requirements for the providers seem extremely onerous. I think that you could do a better job. And I think that for a bunch of folks who talk about how much they want to promote tourism in the city of Portsmouth, you're working directly against that. Having at the disposal of people visiting us some readily available mobility devices like scooters, like rental bicycles, and electric bicycles could really help. It's a long way from the Naval Shipyard Museum to the Colored Library. And, you know, bus service here, especially on Sundays, is infrequent. People are not going to hike from here to there. The other thing is that the downtown area is a pretty tricky place to navigate, even on a bicycle. You've got cars parked, chalk a block, the streets are narrow, and sharing the streets is hazardous. I know, I do it. I use the streets with my bicycle. For somebody who's unfamiliar with this town, coming to take in the sights, I think you need to contemplate a safe path for, for those who want to use it. But, going back to the fee structure, for somebody to provide these devices, they're going to have to have the prospect of making a profit. So, that means that they likely will have a higher fee structure than in neighboring localities because of, of the fees that you contemplate. $5,000 for initial permit, a dollar a day per device, you're taking a lot off the front end. And remember that the folks who supply these, these devices are having to make the capital investment in the hardware themselves, in the equipment themselves, and they have to have people come along at the end of every day, pick them up, and recharge them. That's an economic opportunity for us in Portsmouth. There are people who could make a little side money from doing that, but that's also overhead to the vendor. I think you need to take another look at this. I'm hopeful that because you've adopted the ordinance, you've now met the deadline for the General Assembly, and you can retool the procedure portion between now and the time you actually want to get started. I think it could be very good for us, for tourism if nothing else, but for also for other people who have mobility issues in terms of getting from home to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll continue our discussion, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a clarification for the public, because I've read quite a few comments on social media about this issue, and people complaining about the city spending money buying scooters. And that is not the case. This is legislation for companies who choose to invest in putting their scooter business in the city. The city is not buying any scooters. We are just legislating the way they are, will be operated in the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk?
You're not registered.
That, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We're now at item nineteen dash four thirteen, and this is the consideration of a resolution. And will you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorized the creation of a regional authority under the Wireless Service Authorities Act.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, which is to adopt this motion, which is item nineteen dash fourteen, uh, excuse me, thirteen, and ready for the discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item nineteen dash fourteen, uh, four fourteen, which is the consideration of two resolutions. And will you read a resolution that's under fourteen, four fourteen A, and then read the resolution that's under four fourteen B?
Yes, sir. Item A, a resolution endorsing the city's 2020 General Assembly legislative, legislative package. And item B, a resolution endorsing the city's 2020 federal legislative package for the 116th Congress.
We'll take these items one at a time so that we can consider the adoption of a resolution that's listed under item nineteen four fourteen A, which is the General Assembly legislative package, or some motion to adopt.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Now we're ready for our discussion, and we do have two speakers. One is Mark Gudolgi Yatroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, for the last time this evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. I have a request, and I have a statement. My request is that the casino gaming item in this packet be separated for a standalone vote so that the public can see where each of you is on that particular matter. The second statement is that I oppose casino gaming, and I oppose the city's expenditure of tax money to send public officials to Richmond to lobby the General Assembly for something that the citizens of this city have not had an opportunity to weigh in on. I know that under the legislative provision that created the study, the J-Larke Study, and this process that is supposed to occur in 2020, there will be a referendum at the end, but council has acted as though they had a mandate from the people of Portsmouth to pursue this as a matter of public interest. I believe casino gaming is a blight and a detriment, and do not want my elected officials who purport to represent me lobbying my elected representatives in the General Assembly as though this were something that all of Portsmouth desires. as though this were something that all of Portsmouth desires. I believe that you should be sitting on your hands until the process plays itself out, and the people have spoken one way or the other. Consequently, I oppose this being a part of the city's legislative packet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-414A is a resolution to approve the 2020 state legislative package and the 2020 federal legislative package. But A is to adopt a resolution to endorse the city's 2020 General Assembly legislative package. So, Virginia Legislative Initiative Regarding the Pilot Demonstration Program Concerning the Emergency Shelters Upgrade Assistance. The city is asking the state to provide money to help Portsmouth update and upgrade two emergency shelters by establishing a grant fund of $5 million. Let's look at the history of Portsmouth. They're going to demolish Willet Hall to build a new school and a new police department. Craddock and Woodrow Wilson High School has been demolished. Hunt Map and Emily Sponge Schools have been vacated. The Civic Center has been allowed to deteriorate to put the police in disarray. Purchased the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame for $1.8 million. Now the city wants the state to give us $5 million for shelters. Another request for money is for marketing and promoting the 40th anniversary of the Children's Museum of Virginia. There was no request for money to preserve the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. There is no request for money to preserve the historic cemeteries. There is a list of state public policy initiatives that the city is supporting to get more money on page nine of the PowerPoint. When are the elected going to be frugal with the people's money and make an appropriate priority list? How many? How about the local governments take care of this physical responsibility? Can we start today?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt the resolution listed as 19-414A? Hearing none. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And madam clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
So that we can make sure that everybody understands what we're going to consider next, will you read again the caption of the resolution that's listed under 19-414B?
Yes, sir. "A resolution endorsing the city's 2020 federal legislative package for the 116th Congress."
So that we can have this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. We're now ready for our discussion, and we have one speaker, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 14-B is a resolution to approve the city's 2020 federal legislative package for the 116th Congress. The elected are opposing the federal public policies position regarding the proposed regulation change on providing eligibility for free school meals under a proposed overhaul to the food stamp program. How come we are not promoting self-sufficiency in growing and processing our own food supply? Look at the land and the public housing communities and the schoolyards. All this land can be used for the people to be trained by the school classes on nutrition. We have an extension agent from Virginia Tech that provides education and training. There's a film by Rob Herring and Ryan Werwick called "Save the Soil, Save the World: The Need to Grow," narrated and executive produced by Mr. Dawson. Society of Voice Arts and Science says, "No human being on this planet should miss this film. With only 60 years of farmable soil left on Earth, the need to grow offer an intimate look into the hearts of activists and innovators in the food movement. An eight-year-old girl challenged the ethics of a beloved organization. A renegade farmer struggles to keep his land as he revolutionizes resource-efficient agriculture. And an accomplished visionary inventor faces catastrophe in the midst of developing a game changing technology. The narrative of the movie discovers alarming evidence on the importance of healthy soil, revealing not only the potential of localized food production working with nature, but also our opportunities as individuals to help regenerate our planet's dying souls and participate in the restoration of the Earth by planting and producing food for self-sufficiency. When our generation went to school, we had home economics classes and future Farmer of America classes to learn how to be self-sufficient. How come we are not teaching our young how to be self-sufficient? We can build a cannon factory and teach people how to eat healthy, and we need to get the young off their electronic devices and learn how to do physical work and learn how to grow their own food."
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion, which is to adopt? Hearing none. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And madam clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, boards and commissions, and we do have a report. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I move that the following reappointments and appointments be approved. I'll read the reappointments first. Historic Preservation Commission, Edward Barham IV, Paul Sawyer, Renee Snyder. Cultural Alliance of Greater Hampton Roads, the Honorable Lisa Lucas Burke. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Marlon Deason, Deborah Hines. Planning Commission, Edwina Ricks, Amy Thompson. These will be the appointments. Community Criminal Justice Board, Sergio Neal, Ronnie Peterson. History Commission, Danielle Babcheck, Gracie Bowers. Parks and Recreation Commission, Jeffrey Barber, Vernon Tillage. Portsmouth Park and Authority, Eric Woodley. And Supplemental Retirement Board, Joel Hawkins.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And madam clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us items submitted by city council members. The Chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to add to what Councilwoman Simmons had stated on item 19-412 with the Shared Mobility Device Pilot Program. In addition to the city not buying those devices, the vendor that is chosen will also have to provide liability insurance for those users. So I think that's pretty important for our citizens to know.
Thank you, sir. That's a good point. Councilwoman Simmons?
Thank you, sir. A couple of items to remind the citizens. First, to announce to some and remind others that just a few weeks ago, we were in this chamber for the promotional ceremony of our two most usual sergeants-at-arms. Sergeant Katz and Sergeant Roten were both promoted to sergeant, so congratulations to both of our police officers. Coming up this week, on Friday, the 15th of November, at 1:00 p.m., we'll have the groundbreaking ceremony for the new public housing called Lexington Place. The groundbreaking ceremony will be at 1:00, at 4 Lexington Drive, and that's an open-to-the-public celebration. This coming Saturday, November 16th, we'll have another recycling day at Norcombe High School from 9:00 in the morning until 12:00 noon. That's this Saturday, the 16th. The following weekend, the 22nd and 23rd, will be the start of all of our holiday celebrations. On Friday night, there'll be a holiday open house and craft market along downtown on High Street in Middle Street Mall, and that will run from 4:00 till 8:00 in the evening. The shops will be open late. Things will be opening up at the Children's Museum. The holiday trees will be lit and so forth. And then that Saturday, November 23rd, is the 35th Annual Grand Illumination Parade in downtown Norfolk, which Portsmouth participates in. The parade in downtown Norfolk begins at 7:00 p.m., and of course, that's open to the public, and marvelous and usually freezing cold. And then one last item, completely unrelated. For those that are looking for part-time employment, our Census Commission is looking for people to join their census team. These jobs pay over $2,100 a month for part-time employment, and they will start in 2020. The phone number to call for these U.S. Census positions is 393-8244, and that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair will now entertain a motion to set the time for our work session on Monday, the 25th, to change it from 6:00 p.m. to 5:30. Is there such a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to change the time for a Monday, 25th of November, work session to 5:30. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And madam clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We're at item 19-417, Report on Pending Items. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mrs. Bernadette Hope will come forward with the report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. There were four non-agenda speakers, three speakers required action by staff at the last council meeting. Stephanie Scales advised City Council of an issue with a damaged pipe in her backyard on City Park Avenue. The Public Works Director reviewed the area with the citizen and several of her neighbors. It was determined that the drop inlet needed to be repaired. Public Works has made the repair to the inlet. Bernard Thomas spoke about a higher-than-normal water bill that he received. Public Utilities advised that Mr. Thomas did receive a new water meter in October, and it was explained to him that his account could be adjusted if necessary after a few billing cycles on the new meter. Tom Mayano made a request to City Council for more bicycle signage within the city. The manager of transportation planning has reached out to Mr. Mayano to provide information about the signage, but has yet to be successful in speaking with him. As the citywide bicycle and pedestrian plan moves forward, it will identify safe bicycle routes and pedestrian improvements across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We now come to item 19-418, Non-Agenda Speakers, and our first speaker is Rob Wilber. Sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Rob Wilber. I'm a Portsmouth resident, and I'm the Chair of the Museum and Fine Arts Commission. I'm here today at the direction of and on behalf of the Museum and Fine Arts Commission. It was brought to my attention in mid-October that due to the elevator issues at the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center, that Winter Wonderland would not be happening this year, and then an extremely pared-down version of the exhibition of the Coleman Collection was being planned. Upon hearing this news, I put in a FOIA request to figure out how this could happen, as it's a big deal for the city every year. Problems with the elevator show up in city records dating back to 2018, with four separate work orders placed in December of 2018. In mid-January, the elevator was completely inoperable and could not be fixed easily. Otis Elevator came out to evaluate and gave a quote of $62,612.58 dated February 13, 2019. On March 6, the Department of Public Works indicated that elevator repairs should be completed by May. This was in time for a garden club visit that was planned. On March 25, the repair status was changed to on hold. The Director of Museums requested an explanation about the on hold status, but did not receive a reply. Nothing else was done for three months. On June 18 of 2019, the city apparently had Clark Nixon in to provide another proposal for repair replacement. The day after, Bob Baldwin, Director of Planning, acknowledged the need to have the elevator open in time to set up Winter Wonderland and asked Youssef Khalil and Public Works to advise Otis to proceed and to follow up in 30 days to ensure parts could be obtained. More than a month later, the Director of Museums asked for an update and did not get a reply. That was on July 31. Nothing was done until August 11, when Otis submitted the same proposal that they submitted in February, same dollar total. They put a line through the date and put the new date of August 11, 2019. The Director of Museums again asked about the repair two days later, on August 13, and a purchase order was finally issued for this repair on August 14. From that point through October 16, there were no parts ordered, there was no work done, despite many requests by museum staff on the progress. There had been some incorrect information out there that some parts were actually ordered in January, but no parts were ordered until sometime between October 16 and November 4. It has now come that the parts have been ordered, they're supposed to be here and installed or be here by the end of November. Repair is taking place in December, when it's too late for Winter Wonderland to occur. In the city's Big Four, from the 2019 retreat, it touted the Coleman Collection as one of the ways to tell the Portsmouth story. This egregious delay in repair has caused Winter Wonderland to be scaled back significantly and negatively affects that story. Additionally, there were many other activities and events throughout the year that were affected by the non-working elevator. I mentioned the garden club visit. We had a monthly artist lecture series where people had trouble getting upstairs because there was no elevator. People with wheelchairs, people with children in strollers could not get upstairs to our building. There's also significant problems with leaks at PAC. These leaks have been there for more than a year, and nothing has been done to fix the problem. The leaks are causing significant damage that is completely avoidable in the building. I witnessed it, there are four different spots that you can see significant damage. City management is mishandling the assets that have been entrusted to the city. Not only do we have these problems with PAC, but we also have a pavilion that's been closed for two seasons. Willet Hall was allowed to go into such a state of disrepair that the only viable option was closing and demolishing the facility. Civic Center buildings were not maintained and have been condemned. The city requires that its residents maintain their properties and not let them fall into disrepair, even historical buildings and properties. Yet, they're not holding themselves to the same standard. I could only imagine what is going to happen to the Sports Hall Fab Building and any other buildings the city owns unless someone in management is held accountable for maintaining the assets of the city. We're losing assets and revenue that we can't afford to lose. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Because the holiday season is upon us, I think what I heard is not correct. It's my understanding that one-to-one land is taking place, that all the little people will be on display, none will be in storage, much like the original collection at Coleman's, which was scattered among maybe five different buildings. So that's the first thing. I want the public to understand that it is underway. And then second...
Winter Wonderland is...
Hold on, let me finish. The other point is that that elevator... No, you can sit down.
I...
No, please sit down.
That information is not correct, sir.
We're talking about this up here. You can sit down, please. Please.
You have to sit down.
Please.
I have comments, sir. You're telling incorrect information.
Your time is over, Mr. Wilber. Please sit down. The second...
He has to sit down.
You're not going to speak again, sir. The second point is that I want to make sure that my understanding is correct, that the parts for the elevator had to be fabricated, and that the laws, the spatial disparity that Mr. Wilber talks about was actually time that the city administration was working on finding a fabricator of those parts. Is that correct? So, can you tell the public that one-to-one land will take place? So can you tell the public that One to One Land will take place?
Yes. Mayor, vice mayor, members of city council, the complete Winter Wonderland, which will be expanded from what it was in the courthouse, of which I have shared that the Winter Wonderland went to the courthouse as a result of city manager Luke McCoy asking me to find a place for it quickly, and that was many years ago and has remained there. Not only is it going to be expanded, we have found businesses of which some of the little people will be in that first quarter from Town Bank all the way to Court Street, and we have coordinated that through the work of economic development and their economic development managers and some representatives that have worked with us in the community to help with that being staged. It would be much broader in the Children's Museum, which it is for children, and it is the One to One to Land collection. And I also make this point that, for some of you who may not know, and the work that we did with Mrs. Lancaster, Mrs. Lancaster will be funeralized tomorrow at 2:00, and her obituary is in the pilot this evening or today. In addition, the information as it pertains to the elevator, for those of you who do not know, that the 1846 courthouse is one of the oldest buildings that we are maintaining in the city, and working with Otis Elevator, which is the largest elevator company in the country, they had in turn began to look for parts for this very old elevator. All of the parts could not be found. They did find some of the parts, but currently, Otis Elevator has a company that's fabricating parts that are not completed today. Their projection of those parts, the additional parts, should be here by December, but it will take up until possibly the 1st of February, if the fabricated parts are completed, to all be installed in that facility.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Evans, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager, management. I'm Dan Evans, and I was born and raised, lived in Portsmouth the first 29 years of my life. I left for 33 years, and I've been back since August of 2018. Since that time, I've been observing Portsmouth closely and have a few observations to share with you. People move to cities because they have great schools, good job opportunities, or great amenities. Sadly, they say our schools haven't been what they once were, and apart from state, federal, and military, there haven't been a lot of jobs moving into Portsmouth. That only leaves amenities. Amenities like City Park, Bydaway, Old Town, the walkability of downtown, waterfront communities, many churches, and families of faith. We have allowed many of the amenities to fade away. Portside, Willet Hall, the amphitheater, even the water tower at Victory Crossing is rusting away. One of the first things people coming from Norfolk on the ferry sea is a light ship Portsmouth that has needed a simple paint job for years. If they walk down the seawall, they see poles with extensions on them to hold flags that were meant to inform, but they are empty. If they make it to North Landing, they see a decaying pier that could be a place of commerce with floating piers and hourly boat and jet ski rentals. Also, Portside could be redone, not with a tent or permanent structure, but something simple as food trucks, where people come to hear bands and other entertainment on a stage that's been empty for years. Many cry that the reason for Portsmouth's demise is the tolls. I say that if we have nothing to offer that's not worth a $3 round trip, that's on us. People pay to come to a well-done ghost walk in the Old Town section, our concert at the amphitheater, our great golf at Bydaway, and while here, they would visit many of the great restaurants or other businesses. The only problem with Portsmouth is the decay you and previous councils have allowed to happen. Simple maintenance, as mentioned earlier, you answered the elevator, but what about the roof, has taken away Willet Hall. That could have been given to somebody who would have taken care of it years ago. It took the amphitheater away for two years, costing the downtown economy millions. The promoters who had an idea on how to stay open were ignored and are now suing the city. The courthouse and jail are two more examples of emergencies brought on by ignoring maintenance. Sure, both need to be off the waterfront. The jail needs to be closed and inmates move to the regional jail. A city our size cannot afford but one law enforcement entity. But condemning a city building is not the way to make it happen. It is my hope that in upcoming elections, people ask, "What would you do to maintain the city? Would you fire those who allow buildings to get in such bad shape that they must be condemned? Would you only fire a city employee if they bought the wrong goats? Would you..." You know, buying the wrong goats is a mistake, but at least that employee was trying something different. Allowing buildings and water towers to fall into disrepair and to rust is worse and should be a fireable offense. And many of the problems I've brought up could be solved with public partner, public-private partnerships and wouldn't cost the city as much as the decay is costing it.
Thank you, sir. We do have a need to go into closed session, and is there a motion?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.3 for the purpose of discussing the disposition of real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body specifically regarding the Victory Crossing area, and pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case numbers 19003403, 3277, and 4481. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding the Enray National Prescription Opiate Litigation, case number 1.17 Maryland 2807, in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, Eastern Division, and Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portsmouth Circuit Court case number 15002813. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.3 for the purpose of discussing the acquisition and disposition of real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body specifically regarding GPDC properties. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.6 for the purpose of discussing or considering of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, financial interest of the city would be adversely affected specifically regarding ownership and maintenance of cemeteries. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711a.8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body specifically regarding legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice specifically regarding city council meeting procedures.
Sir, we do have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. We will take a 10-minute recess and convene in the council conference room at 8:52. Once we're completed with the closed session, we'll do our certification in the council conference room. We will not return to the council chamber. Thank you. We're in closed session at 8:52.